Quiet. Good afternoon, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Tuesday, April 15th, City Council Work Session for the Best City in Iowa to Raise a Family and Grow a Business. Couple of housekeeping items before we get started on the agenda. The first section under Presentations, we're going to switch the order of those two items. And then the, under the Department Discussions, we're going to move number three up to the top. Okay. First up is our presentation on the Marion Emergency Medical Services Study. So Chief?
Good afternoon, Marion Council. I'm pleased to come before you this afternoon to introduce our consultants from the Public Consulting Group to give a presentation on the EMS System Study. To really tee this up for them, and they're going to introduce themselves and their background, I want to talk about, you know, how this all began. Really, in the fall of 2022, you know, newly joining Team Marion and learning about a lot of the things that we were doing, the background behind this, and our action plan that we presented to you at that time was to do a study of the EMS system, and also study our deployment capabilities through Community Risk Assessment Standards of Cover. Through sound planning, strategic planning, and great communication all along the way with all of the processes, we continue to see these projects getting executed. And so we're pleased to bring the outcomes of the EMS System Study to you today. At the conclusion of their presentation, I am going to talk about next steps with our partners as we work towards these recommendations to continue to elevate the programs for our community. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen Ken with Public Consulting Group. Steve?
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, I'll go ahead and start off. First of all, this project wouldn't have been possible without acknowledging and expressing our appreciation to the many internal and external stakeholders that provide candid comments in regards to this project. They're listed at all on this slide here. And if we've missed anybody, just let us know. We'll add them as well. But I think we got a pretty comprehensive group that we met with. A little bit about Public Consulting Group and Steve and I as the consultants for this project. I'm Ken Riddle, retired Deputy Chief with City of Las Vegas. I've been 28 years with the city and been doing fire and EMS consulting for about 30 years. Steve?
Yeah, hi there. Steve Noble. I'm also retired from the fire service, 26 years with Northwest Fire Rescue District in Tucson, Arizona. Newer with Public Consulting Group, about a year and a half at this point, but I was the lead consultant on this project.
And then two additional members that weren't able to be here is Rachel Zamanik, who did participate onsite with the onsite visits, and Caitlin Edwards, who managed our projects and keep us on time. PCG is a national fire and EMS consulting firm with a lot of support from the healthcare, cost reporting, and public policy folks we have onboard as well as data analytics and financial analytics. We've been based in Boston since 1985 and consist of four primary practice areas with offices both over the country as well as nationwide and overseas.
So looking into the report, we're kind of going to work backwards, and I apologize. I think the way this is being presented, that our page numbers are being blocked up on the presentation, but I'll go ahead and announce those as we look through. We're going to start on page 121 where our findings and recommendations, this was a culmination of the report altogether, and I think you all have a printed packet if you wanted to follow along. But really, we came to a lot of these through that collaboration of all those partners and stakeholders. And even though it wasn't a direct part of the scope of work to come up with these general findings and recommendations, we'd be amiss if we really just didn't, when we identified some opportunities for the organization or for the city for improvement, that we wouldn't recommend those or address those to some capacity. First one in the administrative recommendations, countywide EMS protocol update. Really, what this is all about is we see an opportunity for all agencies within the county for a collaborative initiative to really improve consistency in training, enhance patient outcomes is the ultimate goal. So really, just coming together and understanding those protocol updates that we're all operating on the same page, that when one agency hands over a patient to another agency, that those protocols are the same for that patient all the way to definitive care into the hospital. Current evaluation of the current 2080 agreement. The 2080 agreement, which is governing, really binding the governance as far as ambulance transport for the city right now, it's fairly dated. There's been some MOU updates to it. It's been modified to some degree, but overall, it's a really dated document. And as the city has evolved, as your residents' expectations have evolved, as demand has evolved, we feel that those agreements probably ought to be aligned directly to the current needs, the current demands of the system. So that's certainly something our team had identified. Planning and coordination of large-scale events, this really comes down to proper resource allocation. It was kind of identified that regionally, if a large-scale event, whether that's a natural disaster, whether that's a man-made disaster of some sort that would put a stress on the demand, stress on the system, that this planning and coordination just isn't quite in place at this point. Being able to identify the weak points in the system, if there was a stress upon the system, where are those? Where can we shore up some strength and strengthen up some opportunities within that system, whether that's a communication piece, whether it's a protocol piece, whatever that is. So there is an opportunity for growth there. Standardized and integration of data systems, this is really a byproduct that would happen really with a lot of the other collaborative agreements and understanding of interagency workings that we address throughout here. But really, the standardized data systems, really, when we start looking at data analytics and having accountability on the data systems and interoperability amongst all the agencies involved in that, and having transparency of actual data that's being processed, how are we doing, the metrics being involved in that. It's a long-term type goal, but certainly having that understanding of the working relationship that everyone comes involved in this system, and where that improvement can align, that'll just, you know, lands in that data. The standards of coverage response zone designation, this is something our team identified when we were filtering the data in Section 5. But this is actually being addressed with the department, the fire department currently right now, through their standards of coverage and community risk assessment that's happening. So this is actually in the works. It does not fall short on the fire chiefs and the administrative staffs right now, and they understand what we are kind of getting at here. And you'll be hearing a lot more of that from the fire chief as that is evolving. And then ambulance response data balance with community expectations. This was part of the community survey that we'll be talking about in a couple of slides. We engaged with the community and had a community survey that put out, based on their expectations of response to emergent, non-emergent EMS calls. And looking at that and understanding the risk, when we start evaluating risk, which again, standards of coverage and community risk assessment being handled, there's a slight gap right now. And understanding if we could take that data, start matching community expectations, and then ensure that that is balanced and well-organized, and the community's getting what they expect, they should be, what they're paying for at this point as well. Operational recommendations, expanding emergency medical dispatch capability. So emergency medical dispatch, or otherwise known as EMD, is an industry standard at this point. And really what it is, it's a call processing triage system. When somebody calls 911, that they have the opportunity, or the dispatcher would have the opportunity to actually ask a series of questions and finite the actual emergency, instead of having a broad category, it'd be a much narrower category of understanding the actual emergency. What that allows the organization to do is resource allocation. We can right-size a response, not only just with resources, but maybe the appropriate response model at the same time. And what I mean by that is not all calls necessarily we need to be running lights and sirens to. If we can truly identify the acuity of that incident, respond normal traffic, or maybe not even send a fire unit at all. We have capabilities and an opportunity to enhance not only firefighter safety, but community safety in those responses, but then, you know, send the appropriate resources to that emergency. And this EMD is an opportunity that we see, having met with, you know, the dispatch centers as well and interviewing them, that this is a capability that any changes within the current response model to the Marion Fire Department would be a necessity at the same time. Exploring dispatch consolidation, you know, our consulting team, through, again, our research and meeting with a lot of members of the community, as Ken had pointed out in the previous slide, we just see an opportunity, again, getting resources allocated, cost savings. There's a somewhat, I would say, of a fragile system with four different dispatches and a lot of calls being transferred. The way that certain calls come in from certain areas and how they need to be processed are all opportunities for a failure in the system. This day and age, trying to manage four different dispatches, I'm sure costs a lot of money. Dispatches are harder to come across these days, whereas we can consolidate them and have adequate staffing in these centers as well. It's just an opportunity that we see down the road that Marion and Lynn County can look into. Interagency EMS training, this is directly related to actually up above with the protocol updates and planning and coordination of large-scale events. And it's that opportunity of boots on the ground to come together, start putting into practice, whether it's just very, very basic care to response models, where they can start building professional relationships, understanding, you know, each other's roles. But ultimately, the whole goal there is, again, to improve patient outcomes. The better we can work together on the streets, that's where efficiencies are built, and that's where outcomes are improved. And then the integration of ambulances into the incident command system. Again, this is part of, if you combine several of those things up above, there's recommendations is the incident command system is when the fire department arrives on scene, somebody will assume overall command of that incident, start giving direction, taking safety accountability. Right now, the ambulance systems, they just kind of come into the system, they'll be given a patient, and they're out. But understanding true accountability, communication of the roles and responsibilities, where they fall within that system, building efficiencies within that system, ultimately, safety for the responders at the same time. But having that collaboration together and then evolving into that system and getting that training, I think, again, will not only improve safety of those responders, but improve the patient outcomes in the long run.
And as I mentioned in the beginning, there was a significant amount of stakeholder engagement, both with the community as well as the internal stakeholders. There were several opportunities for the community to have input. There was in-person interviews, some virtual interviews. There was an onsite, multi-day onsite visit, where we got to follow up with some of the key stakeholders, including area ambulance management staff, Hiawatha Fire Chief, the dispatch center, as well as the Cedar Rapids EMS Program Manager. The fire department hosted a community open house on September 18th. And then we also launched a community engagement survey from September 18th through October 7th, and got a significant number of responses. 793 residents responded. There were seven questions on the survey, and they are summarized in the report, and they were all anonymous questions. In addition to the community stakeholders, the fire department internal engagement consisted of bi-weekly at least meetings with the fire chief and his staff, reviewing the progress and the timelines to make sure this project stayed on budget and time. In-person interviews with both the firefighters' union and additional administrative staff from the fire chief's office, onsite visit where we were able to visit all three shifts, get some candid feedback from those members, as well as the administrative staff. Good participation in the workforce engagement survey, 36 of 47 members participated. So 76% of the fire staff were able to provide input on that survey, and that survey consisted of 10 questions that were, again, all anonymous.
Yeah, just for the record here as well, I know it's covered up, but that was on page 77, that those engagement surveys started within the report as well, just to follow along. Moving to page 51, which is Section 5 within the report, was our incident call data. Now, there was multiple years of data that were analyzed for the, not only just department, but we looked at area ambulance data and Hiawatha data as well. Mainly on the EMS side for Marion, we did analyze both fire and EMS, because we wanted to look at bandwidth and total response capabilities of the organization. But ultimately, the big picture and understanding of the data that was analyzed is, there's nothing unique. Marion is not a destination-type city where we see large spikes in population, or major events weekly where we see large spikes that we would start addressing, maybe staffing or resource allocation. But it's what we would see commonly throughout the country, that it's stable and predictable, is what we'd say. As far as, there is a slight gradual incline, but that's to be expected with the increase in population within the city of Marion, and that I would expect that to slightly grow annually as your population grows as well. There is a two-to-one daytime to nighttime ratio that is very standard across the country for most departments as well. And the big thing is 86% of the responses being EMS, which would indicate a direct correlation to focus, right? If this is what we're doing 86% of the time, that we probably ought to put some attention and focus on what we're doing out there. Not that the other things are not important, but again, understanding that that is a primary response. That being said, you know, we really looked at, again, fire and EMS, not just in the city, but the township responses as well. And that's when we really started looking at response times. Now, when we looked at response times, we took it from 911 call to on-scene. And what that really means is what we're talking about, there's a piece of this that has to do with the dispatch center, or PSS, Public Safety Answering Points. There's some efficiencies that could be built in there. We already talked about having the EMD-type capabilities, or some technology capabilities, or designated fire dispatcher. There's opportunities to make some changes within that and build some efficiency, so that we have a quicker time. And again, the reducing call transfers amongst dispatch centers would help as well. And then we looked at the operational side of actually the fire units, running out of the house, getting to the scene, and identifying potential gaps. And there are some gaps within the city of meeting the standard. That, again, is being addressed in the standard of coverage and community risk assessment that Chief is currently working on. So really, the data, the big thing is that it's stable, it's predictable. We didn't see anything that really jumped out as other than the things that we addressed in there and that the chief is already working on. And then that, kind of what I was leading into is a performance and process improvement of that workflow. That bottom picture that you see under there, that's what I'm talking about of dispatch alarm handling capabilities. And then the lower half of that is really the operational, the fire and EMS response capabilities. And you've got to put those together when you look at what we call total response time. You know, you just don't want to look at from when the call was sent out to the on-scene, but we need to understand when was the call received, and how long did that take? That's what we're going to look at, you know, trying to improve those patient outcomes and those emergent high-acuity calls. Infographic on the right is an example of call processing with, from the Marion communications, and the others are in the report as well. But just to point out, that center little bullet between the two sections, that's where the web interface display kind of comes in, and that's where the call transfer happens. That's an opportunity as a weak point for something to potentially happen or get missed. So looking at our actual processes within these communication centers and identify the weak points and how they can be shored up is the important piece in the takeaway from that. That being said, I think we'll hand it back over to Chief as far as where we go from here. Well, there you are.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, no.
Thank you.
Well, I think, first of all, I'll start by saying, we're really looking forward to working with this great information and our partners on next steps with this. In fact, I wanted to mention Keith Rippey is in the audience today. We've been working closely with them through this process. You know, they're a vital partner. Our mutual aid departments around us are vital partners, the hospitals, the communication centers, they're all partners. And there is plenty of opportunities for us to continue to support this program and take those next steps together. So we already have a meeting scheduled with our administration to meet with area ambulance administration on May 12th. And so we're going to be meeting with them to go over the report. Area ambulance is also conducting a study of their processes, and their report should be nearing completion as well. And we see an opportunity to look at these two together, and how we can further work towards solutions to continue to support the EMS program. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Perfect. Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Chief, in my first year, I think it's probably my first year on City Council, which was seven years ago now, I think there was discussion and a level of interest in looking at a countywide call center. And because I think our city was at a point where we needed to make an investment in our infrastructure, and we were kind of trying to promote that. So I'm curious, based upon all the groups that were met with during this investigation or producing this report, did there seem to be any level of interest in moving towards that? Are we still going to be living with four call centers on an ongoing basis?
So the next steps on that are yet to take place.
Okay.
Talking about those opportunities. Did you have something? Okay. Where we see an opportunity is we're studying the system.
Okay.
As a part of the research, we had identified through this process, and PCG did as well, that there was a previous study that had been conducted. If we're looking at opportunities for efficiencies, those are opportunities that we can explore and work with our partners on. We've got to be, continue to be inclusive and a part of that. At this point, definitive solutions on some of the multi-governmental or multi-jurisdictional agency collaboration still needs more conversation to take those further steps. Really, it's something for us to just to continue to explore. Some of the recommendations may be, take a really long time and may be very, very difficult in the long run to achieve. But they are still nonetheless opportunities to explore and have further conversations about. And the closer that we can work towards efficiencies, ultimately, our residents are the beneficiaries of that. And so at this point, that's what we've recognized, and we're going to continue to learn more, seek where maybe those opportunities may come into fruition. If they don't, if we can grow even within the opportunity that exists, or those are still to be identified.
I mean, this report is pretty massive. I mean, the amount of information that's produced from this, and obviously, there's a number of areas for your team to look into and to determine which ones are the ones maybe you can do easier than others, and which ones maybe are the most important to focus on. So it just tells me, your team's got a lot of homework. So I'm glad we've got the report, so you're able to do that.
Thanks, Steve. I would add to that, I'm looking forward to the work. And I would tell you that there's a lot more to come, and we're committed to it.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chief, with regard to these various findings and recommendations, and Steve started hitting on this just a moment ago, are there any of these that are more critical, high criticality, to get done sooner rather than later versus those just by the virtue of their nature, are big, heavy lifts, and are going to just take naturally more time? Do you have any sense of, maybe with a little more granularity, of what has the highest criticality to do sooner rather than later?
Well, just as Steve had mentioned, we're already tackling a few of them. The first one being some protocol alignment, and really is a complement to the collaboration between our agency and area ambulance. We are already working on a protocol alignment that's going to provide for more streamlined patient care in the field, and that transfer of care to area ambulance for transport to the hospital. I would also add, as an example, another one is an EMS medication exchange to where we are exchanging, for example, if the Marion Fire Department provides a medication to a patient in the field. Today, the process is, we have to take a resource down to Mercy Pharmacy to get a new medication, which is a disruption in our standard of coverage. Through a partnership with area ambulance, we're working on a MOU right now to where we can do a medication exchange on scene, which does not disrupt the standard of coverage for the community. So those are a couple examples of opportunities immediately that are elevating the program at a granular level. When we look at these recommendations, there are some that are specifically process-driven, some of them that are research-driven, such as the standard of cover and response zones, that's something that's already underway. That is a critical piece to studying our community, to making sure that we're identifying any geographical gaps in the community, and we can continue to plan to overcome those with departmental changes or evolution. That's already underway. Some of the more strategic ones that are outside of our immediate control, that's adaptive change. And we're going to be working closely with not only our partners, but the members within our team who are most directly involved in that work. And that's the same spirit in the conversation that we've had with area ambulance as well, that they want those members involved in that work as well, so we can tackle those things.
Well, this is a great volume of work, and everybody who had their involvement with it really appreciates that effort. Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, first of all, just thank you, Chief, to you and your team, and to the consultants for the work that's done on this. It's a big step in a very intensive process and an important conversation. And I just appreciate the professionalism that's been had in this process so far, in looking for these efficiencies that are also cost-saving without cutting corners or sacrificing standards of coverage. And first and foremost, the most important piece of all this that I think us and the partners that we work with understand is, the goal is to provide the greatest service possible to Marion residents. With all that being said, when it comes to reviewing the 2080 agreement, at what point, like what part, what step is that along the process? And with your expertise and the consultant's expertise, are there things that stick out now that we could renegotiate to have to better reflect Marion's specific needs?
Yep, I'll jump in on that one. So, yes, in the last two and a half years, I've been sponging and learning a lot and reading a lot, and figuring things out, studying things. And one of the things I think that came out of this is, when we look at this agreement, as Steve had mentioned, there's, it's a longstanding agreement, which is good. We've got to look at that for what does this part of this program look like as we move forward into the future to meet our community's expectations? What's great about this study is that we've got good intelligence from our community. We've got some great feedback from our community on what those expectations are. And that equips us to have those conversations with our partners as we move forward into the future to work closer towards those recommendations. That's something I've sensed from area that, you know, they're committed to having those conversations. I know City Manager Waller, Keith Rippey, and Jennifer Peaton and I have met on a handful of occasions during this study to talk about as we move into the future and that commitment towards quality service. And that is being demonstrated with some of their efforts within the community with the new ambulance facility. But, you know, as we talk about the shared data opportunities, I think that's all a part of it, looking at response metrics. Patient outcomes is a big, is a big piece of this, where we see opportunities, which also brings the hospital systems in as well with some really valuable data.
Absolutely. And just speaking of the shared data, I assume council have the opportunity to see area ambulance's study as well?
I believe that to be the case, Keith. I don't want to speak for you, but the question was, will City Council be able to see the area ambulance study as well?
Yes.
Please step up to the microphone, because the meeting is recorded. Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Yes. We would have our study finished right now, except we asked for some additional data because our data stopped June 30th of 24. We want the, our, our group to take from July 1 through March 31 because particularly since we've opened up the standalone EDs here in Marion, the call volume has increased and looks different. Those are not 911 calls. They're coming from those standing EDs 99% of the time. So we asked them to add that analysis to it. So that's what, why I don't have a presentation for you today. But if I've already talked to Tom and as soon as I have the rough draft, I'm going to give it to Tom in the rough draft form. And once our board has, I've seen it, I will be happy to come and make a presentation to the, this, to the council with regards to that. And in terms of opportunities, part of the reason why we did our study is because it was time, it was past time for us to do our study for our area as well. And with respect to the 28E agreement, that agreement was, was formulated and passed in 2005. Lots of things have changed. Our call volume has tripled over that time period. The people have, people in administrative positions have changed. So it's time for us to review the entire agreement in its, in its entirety. Because it's not just Marion. We've got Lynn County, we've got Cedar Rapids. And things have changed and we just need to take a full look at that agreement. So I have an executive committee meeting a week from tomorrow. And one of my recommendations to them is to direct our corporate attorney to start taking a look at that agreement just as a document and as a whole.
Thank you, Keith. Appreciate the collaborative attitude and, and approach by everyone. And I don't have any additional questions than what my fellow council members shared. But just, just to say that I really appreciate this work. I think it's a critical step in, in our growing up process as a city and for the entire region to, to have this honest look about where we are and, and set a roadmap to reach where our, our goals of where we should be. And this is a very critical topic, public safety and, and lives of people. It's probably one, it is the most important thing that we deal with is, is public safety. So I really appreciate the work and look forward to seeing what we can implement. I do know that Ryan Waller has a comment or a question?
Just a, a comment. Thank you, Mayor. We started on this journey because we're going through the accreditation process. So this is one of the areas that we needed to explore. And you know, I just, Tom or Chief Fagan talked about the collaboration that we have with our partners. And we've been meeting with area ambulance since December, talking about establishing work groups to go through our, our study as well as theirs and try to identify where there's overlap. One thing that Chief Fagan and I have, have done, we, last week, we went through and met with the different shifts of the department to go through. Hey, high level, here's a preview of the recommendations. The recommendations are the recommendations. Not all of them are going to be feasible. We can explore them. And I think that's what Chief Fagan said is we're going to explore them. So really just, I don't want folks to look at any of the recommendations and jump to a conclusion that we haven't been able to explore yet. And in a true Marion way, we're going to be collaborative. We're going to, we're going to look at the data. We're going to have our touch points with council as we develop recommendations on what we should do, what, what may not make, make sense for us here and now, or what, what sorts of things we might have to look at a couple of years down the road. Because a lot of those, a lot of the recommendations that are in there now are going to take a lot of time. And, and we certainly have a lot of pieces that are coming together right now. Our training facility, I know that's not necessarily tied to EMS. But when we talk about collaboration and, and training on the, on the EMS side, that's also an opportunity where we're going to explore bringing folks together and really integrate emergency response services. So there's a long road ahead of us. And I, I certainly appreciate the work that our consultants have done and the, and the partnerships and the engagement from our partners at area ambulances, the hospitals, from the department itself. But you know, this, this kind of helps us identify those things that we have to explore so we can determine what's right for Marion with, with the goal of our, our patients, our residents at, at the forefront. So really appreciate the work that's been done and we still got a long way to go.
Thank you. Anything else to add? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next item is a special presentation. We, we're all aware that over the last about nine years, we've had the Marion's, Marion's Youth Council. Just a short reminder as to how that came about. The youth council sort of evolved out of, when I first began my term, my first term, I started going to the high schools and talking to students and, and having lunch in the lunchroom with, with, with the students and just sort of hearing how they feel about their city. And realized quickly that we needed to do a better job of engaging with that age group and to explain to them what their city is doing for their benefit, for their future, for, for everyone who lives here. Share all the great stuff that we're working on, help them to engage with city leaders and have a way to give input into what we're doing and have their voice heard so that they feel ownership and, and all the great progress that our community is making. And so this youth council evolved out of that. And Amber left the room, but I was just going to pay her a compliment. She, she has been my partner with the project from the beginning. Amber handles a lot of logistics and communicating with the students. Every year we ask that both high schools for about 20 names. And we invite those student leaders to come together one Saturday a month. And we work on leadership activities. They engage with lots of different city department leaders and city council members and, and staff, our community partners. And we, it, it's always a, a great session with them. It's very energizing. So this year, I decided to, to add another component to it, to take it to the next level, which was to have this, the youth council come up with actual recommendations that they wanted the city council to work on or, or just input to, to the city council. So this is their first time presenting to the city council. And they have worked with, back there in the, in the corner, Erin Marie Toms, who's been just wonderful and giving her time on a number of occasions and, and helping guide the students through this process of coming up with their recommendations and their presentation. So I want to say thank you very much to, to Erin Marie. And here they are. We, we have three presenters and then the, their peers supporting them here. So when you're all done, we want to come up and take a photo with the city council. Is that okay? All right, great. So go ahead and welcome and introduce yourselves and proceed. Thank you.
Can we just hit the button and it'll go to our slides?
I'm not the technology guy.
So I'd like to start by thanking the council for your time today and thanking Mayor Abalosili and Amber for creating this youth council. I know it's given us a lot of great opportunity, not just us three, but the rest of the group. We've gotten the chance to learn a lot about how Marion works. I'd also like to thank all the city leaders we met with. We were given a lot of, a lot more insight into how to give you recommendations today based off of those interactions. So my name is Mahal. I'm a senior at Lynn Mar.
I'm Rachel. I'm a sophomore at Lynn Mar.
My name is Blessing and I'm a sophomore at Lynn Mar as well. And Isabel is also here. She contributed to creating the slides and filling in for me on days I couldn't be here.
All right. So for some background on what the youth council is, Mayor's Youth Council has met over the last few months. We've put together some ideas on what the city of Marion should start, stop and continue to do to make Marion better for everyone, but more specifically older teens. Our small group then compiled these ideas. On the screen, you'll see a picture of our entire group and we're very fortunate that some of that group is here today to very kindly support us. So we wanted to start with what Marion's doing well. We believe Marion has very well-maintained outdoor spaces like parks and trails. We think these, these are very good opportunities to motivate our community to become more active. Especially the trails, we find people our age do use those a lot in the off-season of sports, staying fit, going on walks, those kinds of things. And we think that's something Marion should continue and expand on. We also appreciate the after-school programs. I see the middle schoolers there after school in the library. And that's very good for younger teens is what we have decided. And we think that especially at that age, it's best to foster connections. And what better place to do that and be more connected with your community than the library? Lastly, the programs for all ages, Marion offers a lot of programs for every age. And we think that's very beneficial from youth sports, fostering that love of sports from a young age all the way up to activities for seniors. We think that does a lot to benefit our community as a whole.
Some other things that Marion is doing well is we love all the artwork in the valley or the alleys of Uptown Marion, especially by Fridays. I see a lot of students who are participate in home, like homecoming dances, springling dances. They all like to go and take pictures there just because it's very beautiful to look at. Some other things we really enjoy are the festivals, especially the kite festival. I see a lot of families get out and enjoy nature and just enjoy flying their kites on these days. Some other things that are really good are the youth sports programs that I've seen. I participated in Marion Parks and Rec softball and soccer and basketball when I was younger. And I really figured out what sports I like and what sports weren't for me.
For stopping and refraining from, teens generally stay within the groups of schools. Obviously, we know we have Marion and Lynn Mar. Most of our group, I'd say was majority, I'd say Lynn Mar. Not that it's the better school or anything. Marion encompasses both the Lynn Mar and Marion schools. So it would be really nice if we could foster a better sense of community of teams who are somehow encouraged to meet people from other schools with having our own spaces that are advertised towards our specific age group. A good example of this is in Cedar Rapids. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but there's this very nice arcade and bowling place called Spare Time. This allows for more of a teen, pre-teen space that allows also for more like a communal space for both of them to get together and meet.
Along with that, we'd like to add more teen activities for the age range of 13 to 17. In the Marion Messenger thing that we get every, every year is, has all the activities that are listed. But majority of them are for younger kids or people over 18 and for the elderly. We've noticed a lack of activities for ages 13 to 17. And some recommendations we have are designated pickleball or tennis days for teens because they have that for the elderly. And that's becoming, it's growing in popularity along the youth. Another few ideas that we've thought of that were already happening, but kind of want to like add on to is like a, like a dance with like Marion and Lynn Mar together. That would be a really enjoyable time, like either indoors or outdoors in a facility in Marion or also a potential luau because I know that's a very cool thing that a lot of teens like to do. So yeah, that would be some things we'd like to start. And along with that, we'd like to start some food truck days or food truck festivals because we have a lot of really amazing festivals in the city of Marion, such as like the kite festival, as I mentioned earlier. But most people would leave and go get food other places rather than stay there longer because they didn't have food there. And as everyone knows, food attracts people. So, but a way to get that out there would be through social media. Because I can, I can say I've, the first time I ever saw this was coming to one of the youth council meetings. And I was like, oh, I didn't know they even really sent these out. Like I feel like my parents would read it, but I wouldn't. So I would, I would suggest that we have more social media forums like Instagram or TikTok. Most teens don't have Facebook accounts, at least, at least I can say, most of us don't. That would be a way to communicate more for festivals and activities going on that are in Marion. And lastly, we'd like to start some more teen volunteer programs for incorporating opportunities for young teens to like just experience the outside world and know how volunteering works because some people volunteer at other places that are outside of Marion, but we'd like to bring that here.
And another thing that I could add to the opportunity volunteering thing is another thing that we spoke about is having some of like the older seniors in the community, the older teens, like incorporating something that they would teach some of the younger teens, whether we could have like a cool thing like scholarships or just providing, like one of the things we got to do at one of the clubs at our schools is like LinkedIn sessions for like, you know, because we're getting older and yeah, this would just provide a really good place. So the overall purpose of expanding our communications for teen audiences is to provide a much more engaging, teen-friendly outlet that reflects our voices, our interests and needs. With the social media engagement like Instagram and TikTok, if these aren't necessarily like photos that we're posting, perhaps even having kids in like the youth council or just random, really cool, like I know in the summer, a lot of teens spend a lot of times down, downtown. So perhaps even like interviewing them and kind of just getting to know them more. We want to just create a more teen-friendly space that empowers young people in the communities who express themselves and connects with all the other teens in the community. So thanks again for listening to us.
Again, thank you to Mayor Abalosili, Amber for putting this together, Erin Marie for helping us set up this presentation and our whole group. Before we end, we'd like to open it up to any questions you might have for us.
Yeah. Well, first of all, excellent job. That, that really was great. All right. Well, I'm sure we'll have some questions. We'll start with Gage.
Yeah. Thank you all for being here today and taking the time to participate in the youth council, but also coming to a city council meeting. I guess question for you guys first, just, I really like the idea of having more interaction between Marion Independent and Lynn Mar. I guess in today's community, do you all have Marion and Lynn Mar friends regardless of which school you go to? Like is there interaction there? No, not so much.
Sometimes, sometimes.
I think I do now because of youth council.
Because of youth council?
If I wasn't, I don't think I would.
That's fair because I, I went to Marion High School. I didn't have a ton of like Lynn Mar friends. We kind of stayed on our side, but I think, you know, you guys talked about a luau or some sort of event. And I think if you guys were really interested in, in pursuing that, presenting this type of presentation, focusing in on an idea for like one event with the two schools and you present to your principal or superintendents and the school boards, like you guys could make something like a big type of school dance, two, two school district dance app. So I think it's a great idea. I wish I would have thought of it when I was your guys' age.
That, that could be a, a project for next year's youth council. Starting to shape the agenda already. All right. Anything else, Gage?
No, I guess it was a little bit of a question followed by more of supporting your idea. So that's it. You guys did a great job.
I was at one of your sessions where you started brainstorming. It was last fall, I think. And the sticky notes were flying. People were saying things. And I remember trying to watching, who, who was it that was trying to record all of the items? I mean, you were just on a stream of consciousness and that's, it was just amazing. If you had to pick one of the things you just shared with us as recommendations, well, see now I'm, I'm still thinking about the EMS study. What's the, what's the most critical thing that should be done first if you had to make that recommendation to us?
So what we always came back to in our meetings was just communication. We feel like, as you saw in the continued slides, Marion does a lot of things amazing. And even like despite what all the stuff we suggested, there are a lot of opportunities still for our age group. But we think that communication directed more towards our age group would be the like utmost priority. One of those slides did talk about like social media and short-form videos. Our generation just scrolls. So if I can see something in a video quickly, I'm more likely to look at that than to read something. So more communication like that, more social media communication, that would be like our number one item.
Yeah. And adding on to that, the people that we would be seeing would hopefully be youth in the community. Because it's a bit disengaging, I would say, if we were just watching, you know, like random 40-year-olds, you know, talking about apparent youth stuff.
Gage can start in the video.
Yeah, so having like good, like youthful representation on those social media would be really great as well.
Boy, that sounds like I'm off the hook for any of that. What a deal. Thank you.
Gage has another question.
I did have another question, just curiosity, more, this is more of a show of hands question for the whole group, I guess. And don't feel pressured to answer a certain way because the city council person is asking you honesty. And you're, because I guess I never thought I'd move back to Marion when I was your guys' age, right? I was like, like my hometown, I'm out of here. But I've re-fell in love with it coming back. Just show of hands, I know you guys are young and you got college or the workforce right after to consider before you, you think about this fully. But do you, show of hands, like do you foresee yourself moving back to Marion one day? Show of hands, yes, no, to be honest? Okay, that's more, okay, that's awesome. I guess if anybody wants to talk about that, what, what is it about Marion that you, I know you mentioned some of your likes, but what is it about it that would make you want to live here long term or come back if you leave?
I would like to just live here because I really like going to Lynnmar because they have a lot of opportunities for sports and we're in music as well. Like I'm involved in show choir and musical and tennis and we have a lot of big opportunities. Like we have an amazing choreographer named Lexi Robson and an awesome director called Trent, his name is Trent Bugglewitz. And they, they make it a very inviting community for everyone. And I would want my like kids to go there one day and experience the same thing I did. I also really like Marion. I like that we have this like small town square that's really inviting and like going to Fridays and hanging out with my friends and going out and like going to movies and going to Goldman, just one of my favorite restaurants. I just feel like it's a really inviting community that I feel like a lot of people should experience and live in.
Appreciate it. Maybe you'll be on the TikToks then after saying all that.
So I, I, every group, every year, I tell them in the very first meeting that the purpose of the youth council is to make them proud of where they live, to help them discover all the positive things about where they live. And hopefully, you know, it's, our hope is that they would come back here and be the next city council and be the next leaders of the city and use their talent and their energy here to make Marion even better than it is. And so nine years ago, we wouldn't have heard this kind of positivity from, from the students because I think they just weren't really familiar with what their city was doing and how hard we were working to make it a great place. And that's been our goal and I think it's working because now that the groups leave the program very energized about the place where they live. And even if they don't end up living here for whatever reason, they'll still be proud of where they grew up. And they'll still have great things to say about, about where they live, so. Anything else? Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think, so we've got, we've got a mix up here on city council of who's got a background from Marion and who's got a background from Lynnmar. He was a teacher there.
And Will.
So, oh, and Will, that's right. Will's, no, Will's Marion.
Marion? Oh, oh, Marion, okay.
So actually Marion's outnumbering Lynnmar on the, on the city council. But one of, one of our responsibilities as city council, and I think we've done a pretty good job of this, is trying to make, have amenities in the city for all ages. Now, one of the things we, there's maybe different things that are targeted towards different groups. So you talked about pickleball. Obviously, that's something we hear about all the time. So I go to the Marion Y and what's nice is I see lots of people playing pickleball. But it is probably the senior group primarily. There's some younger kids there, but when they play it's during school time, so it's typically, you know, nine to noon. So that is one of the focuses we do have on pickleball and doing some other activities. So what is important to come out of this is exactly what you're describing is what is needed for your age group. So I think that's why it's imperative to not give a shotgun blast and say, here's twenty items you need to think about, is really zero in on what are your top three? What are the most important that you think is going to have that the city can produce, that we can do? And we've done this in the past with Imagine Aid and Imagine Next. This is kind of the teen version of that. So if you zero in on your top three or whatever, that gives us a better opportunity maybe to focus on those and make those happen. So love the work you did. Thank you for participating.
Yeah, I think there was some really insightful stuff that came out of this. And I'm sure that our parks director got some ideas about how to do more targeted things for your age group. I love the mentoring between the older teens and the younger teens. I think that's what, that's a great, great idea. The, having the joint school activities, that's also been a goal of ours is to get rid of any of those divisions between the north side of the city and the south side of the city and the schools and all of this, you know, we all represent the entire city and we're one community. And, and that's what we want to promote. So I think that's just taking it to the next level with, with your age group. So I love that idea and critical is the communications idea because we don't think about that. You know, we, we put our great, great written materials and we do, you know, we're very, very, we have a robust Facebook presence. But I think you're opening our eyes to, hey, there's another way to communicate what's going on with our age group. And so that, that makes us think a little bit. So I really appreciate it, appreciate all the work. This is a great group of, of, of students that we've had this year. They've been very engaged and very interested in what, what's going on in their city. You have something to add, Ryan?
Just really quick, Mayor, you mentioned the Facebook. Aside from the Mayor's Youth Council, we also work closely with Venture Academics. And Venture Academics had, through that program, had talked to us about, based on our community survey, talked to us about establishing an Instagram presence, which we did. So just, it, it's, it's wonderful to see all ages be involved in, in their government. And it certainly helps us tailor our services to, to you all and echo everything that our elected official said. And it's, it's quite special. So this helps, it helps us refine and, and focus and so thank you.
And your voice is heard. Let's, however we come up and we'll have the city council stand up here and can we get a picture together? But I want Amber and Erin Marie in the picture, so someone else will have to take the photo. Come on up, everyone. Come, lined up up here. Yeah, we'll just stand up behind them. Come stand up here. Stand in front. There we go. You stand in the middle. There we go. Don't cover me up. Okay. Okay, great.
Let's see if I'm tall enough. Okay. Everybody smiling? Here we go. Awesome.
Thank you. Really appreciate everyone's work. It's our next, our next meeting, we'll be saying goodbye to the seniors and giving them their certificates, so.
Yes.
Okay. Moving on with our next item, we have the Aquatic Center project in Willowood Park update.
It's a good segue from talking about teen activities to something that's going to provide an avenue and opportunity for them. So again, as part of our commitment in providing monthly updates towards this project, we're here again this month, provide a project update regarding the Aquatic Center project in Willowood Park. Since we've last updated, we had steering committee meetings, March twentieth, April fourth, and actually just yesterday too, during the open house on March twentieth. We had an open house on March twentieth and then we also released a survey from the twentieth to through the thirty first. For the open house on March twentieth, we had that in the library community room. We had over a hundred people in attendance. We did specifically send outdoor hangers to the neighborhood approximate to the Muneer site. And knowing that they're, they, they were going to be one of the most impacted neighborhoods. We did do this previously with the Willowood neighborhood and followed them up with e-invies from the emails we collected previously. A lot of the themes from the meeting, overall positivity, there was very high interest in the aquatic center in the park. A lot of the concerns we heard were traffic on thirty first that we took in and then just overall noise that the park could bring in. From the survey results, we did post all the survey results that you could find that in your council folder, the shared folder. But we had over eight hundred people take the survey. Thirteen hundred of those were Marion residents. There was overall support for the aquatic center. The two percentages, one is the overall and then the eighty five, eighty five point eight percent, that's the Marion residents were in support of the aquatic center. We had about eighty three in support of the dry recreation items at the aquatic center and eighty seven in support of the Willowood redevelopment. This, of course, is without showcasing the property tax impact, but there was overall so, good support of the project. On April fourth, we had a special committee meeting. And really, we just had three decision points to continue moving the project forward, really narrowing down a concept for Willowood Park. We had talks about specialty slides and water slides for the aquatic center and then just the parking lawn and aquatic center placement on the site. As we go through these, these are really as part of the vetting through the planning process. When we get into the project, what's actually going to be part of the project, those are decision points we'll bring back to council for approval. For the Willowood concept, all three concepts had the very same items in there. They're just different variations. We had forty percent survey results in support of this. Committee was unanimous to move forward with C, have a bigger visual of this. And these are just concepts that will move farther into design and address current concerns such as technical concerns from site, site concerns from drainage slopes. We'll also address operational from parking, things of that nature. Things that, just a high level look at it, we have a play. We have a play area here, a splash pad just south. These are all, would be looked at as natural elements. We are showcasing a, a farmer's market pavilion, really looking at this same size that we are offering at Willowood for the farmer's market, twenty to thirty vendor space. We do show various types of shelter pavilions. This is really just a full vision, a concept to move forward. We do have a lot of prairie and buffer space with the neighbors along there. As for water slides, the discussion for water slides, that came back from the surveys. There is strong support to continue on with moving with an open body that you see on the right hand side. And then we have a tube slide that would be on the left hand side. The specialty slide was one that came up that wasn't as high interest and also would be a multiple reasons for a change out. So what we have here in the right hand corner is the Brumaringo. That is what we were showing originally as the operational slide. We are actually suggesting to move that to a racer slide. This is also from user experience, cost, savings, operational efficiencies, and also better, better phasing options. This is an example of a racer slide, not the exact slide. We will have curvatures, but it is something that you can go, you can go head first, you go feet first, on your belly, on your back. You can race. And so there's a lot more user, user ability. People will be able to go multiple times.
Ryan and I are going to race.
As for the aquatic center site, we looked at the site here. And what I want to point out is we did put, put it on the northwest quadrant, but we have a lot of the high traffic areas and a lot of the high items more towards the center. So the slide complex is here on to the center. It's really the lap pool, diving well, things that are going to have more of a, that diving well will have a rock facade. And we're also showing a buffer with the neighborhood. So keeping a lot of the noise elements off over here, away from the neighborhood and not having any height elements where it's going to affect community privacy. We are showing parking, main parking for the aquatic center on the south side, looking at a staff parking lot over here to accommodate that. And then we show pickleball, dry recreation items fitting in through those spaces. We do show mini golf and that was a discussion that came back in the surveys that was high, but it's something that if, that will bring back as far as decision points on whether that's a phased option or even included into the project. But this location is, there's a lot of elevation here and that's really why we have that in that location there. As for the aquatic center site, this is really the layout that you're showing. And the big, big changes that you see is just location. We've put the lap pool here. We do show that enclosed and being served privately or can be served when the rest of the facility is closed. And then we also changed out the slide and put it over here. As we talk about phasing, these are things that, you know, we'll be coming back to see if these could be phased, but that's why they're positioned towards the back as things that could be brought in later if needed. Upcoming engagement opportunities, we had a, again, a steering committee meeting on Monday. We have the city showcase coming up on twenty six. We'll have a presence there to continue to educate about the status of the project. On May third, at the first farmer's market, this is really the last day before we actually fill the pool. We'll have an open house, invite people in, show the existing conditions, be sharing the risk matrix. We'll do a similar exercise in the fall time, continue to communicate to the, or educate the community about the existing additions at Willowood Pool. We'll have more information than Marion Messenger. And if anybody wants to have most updated on the project, we do have our webpage at cityofmarion backslash aquatic study. As far as for next steps, again, we'll do monthly updates for, for council as far as the project. And May we'll have a construction manager at risk approval. And really, May thirtieth, we'll start coming out with some prelim pricing. And that's where a lot of the decision points, we come into council as far as when we talk about what will be going into the project. And that's going to be leading up to the bond referendum, July, or to the draft language on July seventeenth in the referendum on November fourth. Any questions?
Questions? By the way, you did a great job at Medco this morning.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No question, but just, just a comment. I guess I'm the only aquatic center steering committee member here at council today. So I just wanted to add a little bit of context, but first of all, just thank you Seth for the work you've been doing, guiding the steering committee along. I think it's been excellent. I was a little apprehensive at first when we started talking about the location of the aquatic center. From where we started, it was closer to thirty fifth, right? And the reason why it's over there is because of the slope of the, the ground there. And so at first I was really nervous and I thought about it for a while, but I was really pleased to see this new layout, especially with the, the water slide kind of tower, the lazy river moving to the east side of that, that site, because I did have the concerns of, you know, if we have a tall water slide tower overlooking people's houses and yards, what that looks like. And I, and I walk on thirty first a lot, so it'd be really easy for folks to see everything in people's backyards and houses from up there. So I'm just really pleased and I think the, the placement of the, the items that could be phased in later, if we have that discussion and have that decision point later, I just think it's a really smart layout now. And I just appreciate the work and thought that's gone into this from you Seth and from the consultants as well.
Great.
Seth, thinking about the water slides, I'll just, this is just something for you and the team to take a look at. At least I recommend this. I know that in other locations that have had aquatic centers, there have been occurrences that were relating to the safety of the, whatever the water slide was. Now, obviously, very sophisticated aquatic centers can have, you know, high elevation slides, you know, all kinds of things. I would just encourage us really to take a look at the safety and, you know, how does, how does the person experience going down that slide? And anyway, if, if you and I need to talk about this more, I just think there are some considerations that need to be built into this. And I would hope that our consulting entities will also be able to advise us on that on relative safety from one slide type to another.
Absolutely.
Steve? Yeah, I wasn't going to make a comment, but I guess as we start moving towards getting costing and laying out the design of this, I mean, my recollection from the tours of the water aquatic centers that we went to years ago, three things stand out in my mind. One, they said you can never have enough of shade. You can never have enough chairs. And the most popular item in everyone was the lazy river. So I don't know, I cannot tell from this concept if, how that lazy, the size of that lazy river compares to the ones we looked at, because I remember one said it was maybe just big enough. Another one said it wasn't big enough. So I don't know how this compares. So I don't know how this compares to the ones we saw.
What the steering committee said, and they, what they said was how wide was Ankeny's, which was nine feet, we need to make it nine feet. How long was Ankeny's? We need to make sure ours is longer.
Exactly.
So.
Is it?
That's what, yeah, that's what they're doing.
Okay, alright, cuz that, my Ankeny was the one that stood, I think the one in Cedar Falls was smaller, shorter.
Yes.
So that wasn't good, but even, so you want it to be at least as long as Ankeny.
Yeah.
And maybe even longer, so it does meet those.
Yes.
Required. Fantastic.
And, and as far as the shade, there, we, we are definitely considering shade, and what you'll see, you'll see a lot of green space, and really, we're bringing a lot of the nature. So you're in a park, so there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for seating, shade, um, and then even rentable cabana spaces, so.
Yeah, and I love that it's just not, it's not just a sea of concrete, you know, um. I have nothing to add, except I know that the, um. Mini golf is not a solid part of the place, it's just concept, but if it, if it were ever implemented, would that be a fee-based activity?
It, it would be, and that, that's something that will bring back, I mean, at this time, you know, we're likely gonna recommend to. Put that into a future consideration, but not as part of the project, but, um, but yeah, I mean, typically those are fee-based.
Okay. Ryan?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, just, the, with the, the mini golf, um. Conversation as a springboard, the work of the steering committee, and this is more of a reminder for those folks that are watching at home. That have not, maybe have not followed along, uh, as we've been going through this, the steering committee is gonna do the work, work with the consultant to get pricing. It's gonna come back to council, May and July, to get the, the what's in and what's out. And from that, we'll be able to do, uh, more of the costing impact on what's, what is it gonna cost in the property tax bill? What is it gonna do for our debt service, um, and all those financial, financial considerations? Those things that are gonna be recommended out, or council decides that they're gonna be coming out. Uh, there might be some things that we would be able to incorporate in our CIP planning as a future project, so. Um, there's still a lot of work to be done, uh, a lot of analysis that's gonna take place over the next several months. And we just wanna make sure we're, we're painting as clear of a picture to our residents as possible before they go to the polls in November.
Okay. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Oh, well, just one more thing, this morning, that was the first time I heard anything about cost recovery. Uh, is that part of, is that gonna be part of whatever is put out to the community and?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we'll do a full business plan as.
I mean, that was something I hadn't thought about, I mean.
We had it during the feasibility study, and really all we'll do is update that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Alright, next item, we have, uh, the annual review of the fireworks ordinance. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, um, yeah, I don't know how I feel about following up a happy Aquatic Center discussion with fireworks, but I'll do my best. Um, so, this is the, uh, as you stated, Mayor, this is, this discussion involves the annual, annual review. Of, uh, Marion City Code Chapter two twenty-nine, twenty, uh, regarding the use of fireworks. Um, I know you all have asked for us to give an annual update, something we're more than willing to do, and that's why I'm here tonight, so or today. Um, currently, Marion, uh, use is allowed from July fourth from noon until eleven P M. And then on December thirty-first from six until twelve-thirty on January first. So just some sta- statistics from March of twenty-four to March twenty-five, um, which was the last, last month, obviously, we could complete. Um, the police department, we took a hundred and twenty-four complaints, we issued one citation, three letters to abate, uh, one municipal infraction with the help of Cara. And, uh, there were no fire-related, uh, firework-related fire or medical calls, which is great news. Uh, in comparison, um, Cedar Rapids, who does not allow fireworks at all. Um, had seventies in the same timeframe, March twenty-four to March twenty-five, had seven, hundred and seventy-three complaints and fifteen citations, so. Um, yeah, it kinda speaks for itself on banning versus not banning, right? So just a little bit of historical data, um, this goes back eight years, as you see Marion, our highest year was two thousand seventeen. For whatever reason, three hundred and ten calls, which again, people don't always call it in, um, when they're being shot off illegally. And sometimes they call them in when they are being shot off legally too, but, um, as opposed again to Cedar Rapids in two thousand twenty. Again, I don't know if this was COVID boredom or what was going on there, but eleven, uh, one thousand one hundred and seventy-four calls and thirty-nine citations. So again, you look at the numbers, and usually they're about three to four, sometimes five times higher than our calls as far as complaints go, so. Again, speaks for itself. Some comparable cities, uh, cities that permit, Ankeny, Bettendorf, which Bettendorf, if you look at the dates, they're most like us. Most like ours, I should say, uh, Cedar Falls, which allows on July fourth and fifth, and then not permitted Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, North Liberty, Iowa City, Urbandale, and Johnston. So quite a few there. So the one thing that could, uh, be affecting what we do in every city in Iowa. Um, its current pending legislations is House File seven oh-two and Senate File three oh-three. I assume you're all aware of this, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about it anyway, it just includes language. Uh, that a city council may prohibit or limit the use of consumer fireworks, except on July third, July fourth, and December thirty-first. So, obviously, this would add July third, um, to a day that we would have to allow it. If this goes through, um, I kinda looked, and from what I saw, it looks like it already passed in the senate, so it has yet to pass through the house. And then the governor has to sign it as well, so that's probably gonna be happening in the next three weeks, four weeks, so. Um, again, currently in Marion, it kinda shows what, you know, July third not allowed, July fourth the hours, and December thirty-first to January thirty-first. Or first, and then if legislation would pass, those are the hours, um, that would be applicable. Uh, if we were made to, uh, have it happen and not, not be our choice, so. Our recommendation as staff, um, no changes right now unless obviously we're required to by the state, so. Any questions at all?
Questions, yes.
Do, do you have any insights regarding the, uh, logic in the legislation? To include July third?
I do not, uh, my only assumption, and again, assumptions are dangerous, right? But my only assumption would be that it's the day prior, they're just letting people get an early start, that's the only thing I can think of. I, I have no insight as to why or how they came up with the dates, I don't know if it started that there were more dates and they narrowed it down. Or how they handled it, but those are what they came up with.
Have, um, Ryan, maybe this is a question for you, has, have other communities or have we registered any opinion? Uh, through our lobbyists relative to, uh, this legislation?
Our lobbyist is registered for undecided, um, that is a typical one where they, they flag it and they monitor it. And then they're engaged in conversations, um, Cedar Rapids is on it, uh, I C T A C, which is the Iowa Association of Counties is, is on it. Uh, the League of Cities is the only one that I saw that was registered as against at this point, but there are a number of, uh, lobbyist declaration, declarations. For that.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, in, in my opinion, the biggest issue about this is not whether it's July third or not. It's the fact that the legislature continues to ignore the home rule situation. They did it when they changed the rule where we could sell fireworks. Where every city could not make the decision on where fireworks could be sold. And now they're making every decision for every city on when you can shoot off fireworks. So to me, this is a whole issue about home rule, where the legislature, especially on this topic, continues. To strip that rule away from cities that wanna make their own decision. So in my opinion, they're doing, they're moving cities in the opposite direction of trying to control what they wanna do. So to me, that's a bigger issue than July third or what day, so.
Like, I, I'm in the same, same, uh, camp, um, and I'm not sure it really matters how we register on it or how we, you know. Um, because there's just a move to take away home rule, um, you know, we get to regulate. Uh, things that are much less dangerous than this, but, uh, you know, on fireworks, we can't stop them from being sold in a grocery store parking lot. Um, so.
Yeah, and I do wanna add to that, I, I missed a bullet here, I apologize, I think I jumped down to, so you all would know the times, and everybody listening would know that. Actual times that fireworks could be shot off if the state goes with this, uh, but the, one of the other part of, uh, those bills is that, uh, they. You could allow consumer fireworks to be sold from a permanent structure at any time throughout the year, which, again, yeah.
Yeah, so somehow, go ahead.
Uh, just a couple of things, and kind of a related question, um, one, I, I echo my colleagues, I'm just really. A little tired of the legislature deciding to get involved in city business, especially in these type of spaces. Just because every community is a lot different in Iowa, I mean, where my grandparents live in little, good old Earlam, Iowa. Sheriff shoot up fireworks over there, that's part of the culture, that's, that's what, southwest Iowa, um. Here in Marion, a growing city with a lot more infrastructure, uh, a lot more houses close together, uh, this, to me, this isn't really the place to, to do that. Um, and I know it's kind of half and half on surveys of residents who, who like using fireworks, who don't like using fireworks. So I just wanna take a moment to kinda represent the, the voices of those that, that don't like the fireworks and wish that they could be banned. Because if it was up to me, we would ban them anyways, um, because I understand the enforcement can be difficult. But I believe most people simply don't want to break the law, uh, so when something is banned, it itself does change behavior. Clear ordinance may not reduce the number of incidences, but rather would influence the scale. Um, especially in, in my neighborhood, every year, there's probably thirty-minute to forty-five-minute full firework shows being put on. That probably wouldn't happen in a band, people would be more likely to shoot one or two and try to kinda sneak like, oh, he lit him off, and, uh. You know, but, but also just thinking about those, uh, you know. That these type of long neighborhood displays are overwhelming for, for people's pets, for people's children, individuals with mental health or developmental need. Developmental needs such as veterans with PTSD, um, I know now we have, you know, fireworks and fireflies, July third typically, right, every year. So my only question, and it's not so much a public safety question, more of a city overall question. I just wonder what is the possibility that at some point we could at least explore moving that event to July fourth in the future? I think just having our own show on the Fourth of July could potentially limit some of that usage outside of, uh, the event itself. Because people, July fourth, maybe they don't wanna go to Cedar Rapids, but they wanna stay in Marion, maybe they'd be more likely. I think our event, uh, is popular enough, our attendance is large enough that I don't think competing with CR activities would be an issue. I think people would show up, um, to ours or hop around to both and pick the one that they wanna go to more. But I really don't foresee us losing any folks that already come to Lao for that event to go to Cedar Rapids. I think we are big enough and most popu- and popular enough to have our own Fourth of July event instead of July third.
Yeah, good thought, okay, um, so, yeah, go ahead.
One last follow-up, and so I, di- did I hear you correctly that the legislation, if it's passed, would then allow. Uh, year-round sales of fireworks from permanent structures? Does that, um, does that then cause us to have to rethink some? Of our fire codes, inspection codes, this zoning, uh, anyway, I, I'm kinda just interested in. Sort of what the initial thought is if that goes through.
Yeah, Grant, I can, I can respond to that. In regards to compliance with our fire code. Absolutely, we would, we would be providing the inspections, you know, in alignment with our adopted fire code. In regards to the zoning, I, you know, we would need to look at. What, what the code at the state level would mandate locally, and we would, we would respond to that accordingly. But in regards to the enforcement and compliance for the safety standards, we would remain consistent in our inspection processes.
Okay, alright.
And as for zoning on the use side of it, um, currently wherever retail commercial is permitted. We have to allow the sale of the fireworks.
Under state law. Yeah, who knows? Uh, yeah, I, I guess, you know, I, I, still, I did, I initially voted on it, and I still register under the idea that. It's impossible in an urban area to use fireworks of this grade without impacting your neighbor, it's just impossible. So, um, I just don't think they belong in an urban area, but, um. So forever willing to reconsider, I, that's where I would fall on. On that side, um, and I do agree with what Gage said, that most people are law-abiding. If, if we did have a total ban, it might impact the length of these, you know, full. You know, uh, industrial-grade fireworks shows, uh, that people are putting on in their neighborhoods. And I think that's what's really causing a lot of the angst among some of the residents, it's just, it just goes on forever and ever, instead of just one here and one there. Or, you know, five minutes or something, they go on for, forever, um, so, just my, my thought on it, but. Appreciate your coming in to give us the update.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we have Leanne with utility rates for twenty-six.
Clearly, I drew the short straw tonight, I mean, how do you go from mayor's youth council to aquatic center to fireworks for utility rates? Well, we're gonna try it. Um, so this is just the first stop in the utility rate process that we've established, so today we're gonna discuss. The proposed rates for July one, twenty twenty-five, and then that information will be available for the public on April twenty-sixth. At the shitty city showcase, it will be provided in, um, a handout near city council. And then also that information will be provided in the May eleventh Marion Messenger, we'll check back with city council on May twentieth. And then that will end in the resolution amending the schedule of fees on June nineteen. So our annual review is focused on long-term financial sustainability, operational needs, and the responsible planning of infrastructure investments. Um, to support this work, we do continue to partner with Michael Maloney at D A Davidson, and you did. Included it in the council packet is the standard rate presentation that Michael Maloney has provided the council previously. As well as our cash flow models, um, working with him does any, um. Ensure our recommendations are grounded in data and aligned with the city's fiscal policy, capital plan, and loan covenant, covenants. This is a high level of what the monthly utility rate recommendation is. Um, we are not recommending a rate increase for the solid waste utility at July one. As council is aware, we just implemented the automated collections on October fourteenth. We've only had two billing cycles since implementation and only have a few months of data. So we're gonna continue to monitor, monitor that data in the coming months, and we will bring back to city council if needed. If the data analyzed in partnership with D A Davidson would support a future rate adjustment. Especially in light of the fact that we do have loan covenants on that fund. For sanitary sewer, we're looking at a fifteen-cent flat increase for capital and fifteen cents on the flat service charge for operating. For stormwater, fifteen cents on the service charge and ten cents on the E R U, and for urban forest, one dollar. So what does this mean for a monthly bill? On a standard usage of twelve hundred cubic feet, that's one point eight four percent, or three dollars and eighty-seven cents on the utility bill. Really quickly doing a deep dive into the, the, um, ones that we are recommending an increase. Um, the increase on sanitary sewer is necessary to support Marion's share of upcoming investments at the wastewater treatment facility. And we're looking to gradually increase the rate and also to keep pace with inflation. And additionally, just pointing out, the Public Works Facility note does have loan covenants, so we wanna ensure we're in compliance with those. Any questions on sanitary sewer?
Questions, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess with our share of the wastewater upgrades for Cedar Rapids estimated, I don't know, was that around like forty million in total?
So the solids handling project, which is estimated to occur in fiscal year twenty thirty. The number that we'd been provided previously is a, a full amount of two hundred and fifty million for the project. Marion's share would be twenty-four point five million, and then the main lift is a project projected to occur in fiscal year twenty thirty-four. That cost was projected to be a hundred and thirty million, Marion's share of that fifteen point nine. And again, those are just estimates at this time.
Yeah, I guess how confident are we in those estimates, and then how might, how are we adjusting that strategy if the cost ends up significantly higher or lower? Probably won't be lower.
I don't know if you wanna speak on the work that you're doing with the, um. With Cedar Rapids and Hiawatha and the whole group in the region.
Absolutely, uh, these numbers are to be a se- are. Absolutely. Uh, these numbers are to be a se- are are projected for when that construction would happen. Uh, it doesn't mean that, you know, it could be could be less or it could be more, but they are projecting it not in today's numbers in the future, what those future numbers would look like. So that is their projection. One of the things that we, Mike and I are working on with the twenty twenty-eight E agreement, um, we're getting closer to getting that solidified and approved by all the attorneys that are involved. But with that, we are also um, asking them to separate out the CIP, if you, you know, new, not operational, but those new no- new items that are really capital projects so that we can see and then project and model those rates accordingly. Um, but that'll, that'll, that'll take a little bit of time to be able to do that.
And and the, this is a this review is an annual process for us, so as we get updated figures or learn more or as they're in in the, in the actual construction phase, we'll get more information, and so we'll be able to analyze it year over year, and which will account for any sort of deviations. Well, what our strategy is, is we just, we want to avoid a shock. We want to make sure we're gradually building that up so we can, we can afford it rather than just dropping it on our residents at the last minute.
No, that makes sense, and I appreciate the foresight into that, um, to avoid that, that sticker shock. Um, because it's, it's a big project, but it's an essential project that we need to do and we need to contribute to, so.
Say on the finance side of that conversation, we're making assumptions based on these two numbers and doing our own projection on what would it look like if we were to have financed it and layered that in. And we're just kind of holding that data until we get better data.
Sure, that makes sense.
Yeah, Kim, the question I have about the uh, project cost estimates as we know them now, is there a process within that um, ongoing uh, project team to, as we see known, realized cost impacts, whether they be uh, by virtue of the tariffs, which then predictably can have uh, impacts on, you know, uh, domestic pricing, because domestic pricing will follow foreign pricing just because it can. Um, I I guess the question is, whether, whether there's a long-term permitted impact because of tariffs or that dissipates, wh- what, what's the plan for the periodic update of the projected cost to validate that end-state number? I guess what I'm, how's that work?
Is how, how do we continue to communicate?
Yeah.
Yeah, so annually, uh, we will continue to communicate, bring our Hiawatha, Marion and Cedar Rapids team together, no, no less than annually. So as we're learning more about the need of their capital projects, they are also going to su- supply us with their capital improvement plan, the five-year plan, so we can also see and project that, so we can see they're getting closer, have more conversation about that. Because that, as Ryan said, that's the important piece to us, is making sure that we are building our model so that it is, we are not doing this huge increase uh, that, you know, that we, we can control what that increase can look like at the best of our ability with the information that we have.
So our internal projections and and calculations will mirror whatever the inputs are periodically over time?
Correct.
Okay.
Moving on to stormwater, this one really is just maintaining the status quo. Um, the adjustments just maintaining the existing service level while we await completion of the stormwater master plan, which will then inform what we would need from a capital investment. Seeing any?
That was straightforward.
And then urban forest, um, this would be a one-dollar rate increase to support the reforestation plan that was previously presented to city council. Um, the Parks Department Urban Forest Division will be presenting a phased implementation, because if you recall, that plan showed all the different areas of the community and had a very large investment in urban forests, so they will be bringing that back to city council within the calendar year. And this is a dollar to support that. So in summary, it's a one point eight four percent increase on twelve hundred cubic feet of water usage, if you look at the utility bill. Here's what that actually looks like on a residence utility bill.
I'd like the address.
You know, I I appreciate you saying that, Grant, because when I presented this during pregame, Todd said to me, you might want to remove the person's name and their address.
And that is now public record, Todd, sorry.
I thought that was funny. Um, so, uh, lastly, our next steps, this information will be provided at the city showcase at the council's table. May eleventh in the Marion Messenger. We'll come back to city council, check in on the twentieth, and then June nineteenth will be the resolution amending the schedule.
Okay, any other questions for Leanne?
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne. Okay, the next is discussion with Gary, chapter one twenty-six, building and construction codes.
Right slide, right? Good afternoon, mayor and council. Um, I'm here to answer some questions about, um, that you had at the last council meeting at the public hearing. Um, about adding the structural sheathing to the phone, if you're using foam board on the outside. Um, I did re- I did reach out to all of our comparable cities. Unfortunately, we only got four responses. Um, I, none of those have, um, they all allow foam board and and all of them do extra inspections. Um, I did have some conversations last week with some others, um, some comparable, some not, and at this point, I have not found anybody that is um, recommending or using um, the structural plywood when you use foam on the outside. Um, also, you asked about the estimated cost that would, it would add to the structure. Um, so a fourteen hundred and sixty-four square foot home, we're estimating it'd be about sixteen hundred and fifty dollars to add that. Um, and then um, twenty-four hundred on a, on a little bit larger house, and then um, about thirty-five hundred dollars on a two-unit townhouse is what we're kind of looking at, so. Um, just wanted to show that one picture again. Um, the staff is recommending um, for security and for resiliency of of um, of building safety, um, that we go ahead and move it forward with the adoption as we have written it, so. Any questions for me?
Questions? Go ahead.
Can we back up to the cost slide? As I, I think about what the objective here is, is to increase the structural integrity and resiliency of a wall unit. I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
Correct.
Um, which then mitigates wind damage that you, you have that other picture of.
Right.
And I, I just, from the standpoint of a, of a, you know, a single-family home standalone, fourteen hundred feet or sixteen hundred feet, if you have part of a wall getting ripped off, coupled with perhaps um, wind-driven water penetration, the, you're going to exceed either one of those cost estimates of sixteen hundred or twenty-four hundred dollars in that repair.
I'm quite certain you probably would.
Yeah.
I don't know that for sure, but.
I, I, so, I understand the cost sensitivity to the construction. It really is, what's the, what's the mitigation of downstream damage and its subsequent repair? Um, and uh, so, I guess I, I'm kind of erring on the conservative side. Let's build the structures as best we can.
That is, that's what we've thought as well, and in the efforts of reaching higher, we've kind of thought that was a good, good mix to do.
But I think it, what the point was is, you, what's the cost downstream if you have to have an extensive repair, because the wall wasn't built to that, to that increased standard, that's all. And I don't know if Randy has any visibility to how that in fact impacts insurance costs or anything. Or unknown, maybe.
I, I've reached out to a couple of carriers on that since our last conversation about that, and that is certainly something the insur- insurance industry is starting to review. Uh, the Dratcho and the uh, losses that have occurred here in the Midwest are, are prompting a lot of these carriers to take a look at those particular items. So it's going to be one of those things where uh, right now, when we're underwriting structures, whether it be commercial or residential, we are uh, building back these homes the way the original construction was. Um, so I, I, I without a doubt know that if individuals are going to go to a home that are going to have a uh, insulated board type sighting, they're going to incur higher premiums on those homes because of that. Um, being a former firefighter as well too, and perhaps Chief Tom, uh, Tom has something to add to this, but, you know, though that OSB, even though it's flammable material, does buy firefighters and the residents a little time. Um, as you've all seen on the national news, uh, where the governor's home was um, placed on fire, you can see the uh, prominent structure. Um, that OSB board does a lot to these deals, and I appreciated the other gentleman's comments about, you know, we need to make sure that these homes are affordable, but uh, the reaching higher says they have to be safer. Um, if fifteen hundred dollars is the, is the breaking point of of a home being sold, then I think maybe we ought to take a look at some other cost factors in hardscape, landscape, some other, some other things, but those types of things are in my book are not something that should be compromised. Um, I, I think the OSB board is is a fantastic deal. We need to make sure that the quality of these homes are going to withstand the time. I'm always still concerned about what these homes are going to look like in thirty, forty, fifty years, and when you have that type of building material, it's not getting better, it's getting worse. So that is just, in my mind, that's an inferior product to be used, and uh, I, I take a look at this from fire firefighting all the way through the, the insurance factor. I would not, as an insurance representative, typically want to even insure one of those homes. Um, it's got too many risk factors for me.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
So, yeah, con- conceptually, I, I agree with the recommendation. Uh, again, I think if you're going to build something, you do it right the first time for the long term. Uh, I, the, the additional amount is about half a percent on the total cost.
Right.
Roughly. Uh, I don't think that's a significant amount to do it right the first time, and and I, I think you got the opportunity to say, hey, our new homes in Marion are built better for the long term, and the resale is going to be better. So you market that. Have we heard, since our, our meeting a couple of weeks ago, have you heard from any other uh, builders or contractors about this issue?
And I did um, reach back out to Drew Rets again. He was the gentleman that was here the last time. And we, we spoke again, and he, he was actually gave me some of the numbers and that I put up here.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if he's going to come up, come tomorrow night, or I went to Thursday night or not, but he's the only one that I've had any conversation, anybody that's reached out to me, other than our, the contractors that are on our construction uh, review board, they were all in favor of it, so.
Yes, sir.
Just one postscript, um, something that struck me from the last time that we talked about this. Using the um, foam uh, sheathing, what's absolutely critical there is when the um, when the sighting is installed, if I remember what was said correctly, the sighting has to be absolutely um, um, yeah, attached to uh, the, the
The studs.
The studs, yep, the, the framing uh, of the wall. And then there has to be the uh, proper installation of a cross brace in order to give the, the stability to that wall unit. So it just seems to me, there's a lot of variables and a lot of opportunity for um, construction error um, i- i- using just the, the foam sheathing. So I, I think our approach eliminates a lot of that uh, potential um, construction risk um, and, and ultimately ends up at a better product.
I would, I would agree with that.
I have nothing to add. I'm relying on the experts. Um, anything else for you to add?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. At this point, we just have the review of the agenda left, um, and I'm going to turn over the meeting to the mayor, Deputy Mayor Pro Tem?
No, I'm the mayor.
I'm sorry, the mayor Pro Tem, that's right. Got confused for a minute.
You're good, you're good.
Touchy, touchy.
All right, uh, and I, I won't be at the, at the meeting on Thursday. For those who celebrate Easter, happy Easter.
Too. All right, you guys are stuck with me now. Um, next is the upcoming agenda review. Is there anything before highlighted items that anyone wanted to bring up, questions or discussion on? No, no. All right, Mike, you have D seven and D eight. And we're, and they are one item tonight on this thing, so.
I brought backup.
Perfect.
So you have my, my Matt Talabine here, our solid waste director, um, to give you a summary of what we're talking about here.
Good afternoon. Uh, the city is seeking to leverage technology to transform its solid waste management, making it more cost-effective, responsive, and accountable. To achieve this, a resolution is approving a thirty-six month agreement with RouteWire Inc. for solid waste collection optimization in the amount of fifty-three thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Also, a resolution approving a thirty-six month agreement with Sam Serra for vehicle location and remote fleet management with the amount of four thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars. Both source, source well-discounted purchases. Uh, RouteWire City software, what it does, uh, digitizes our routes, uh, allows pre-post-trip inspections on our maintenance, or our fleet, gives operators turn-by-turn directions for their routes, uh, notifies us of missed pickup identifications, lets us know our routes are complete. Uh, maintenance service verifications, a detailed historical and real-time reporting. Um, allows us to do all of our bulk collection and cart deliveries, and uh, it's administrat- administrative central hub, which the last bullet, I mean, that's what it is in a nutshell. We, everything we're doing now, it's on paper, or it's touched two or three different times, where now this will allow us to do everything from one, one application, anywhere from operators to admins. Keeps us efficient in our day-to-day operations. RouteWire also integrates with the Sam Serra technology. Uh, it's a hardware device, gives us real-time AVL GPS tracking, uh, monitors our vehicle diagnostics and engine data, monitors our driver's behavior and performance metrics, uh, pickup validation, so it monitors every time that mechanical arm moves, uh, and geo-fencing, route optimization, field usage analytics, and compliance management tools.
So just to give you a kind of an example, let's say that like today, the garbage, the landfill decided to close at eleven o'clock. So we're, we got to go to the landfill, we got to drop off, go back to our routes, and so what we can do with that is then we can see, okay, route driver A is doing a really good job, or he has less loads to pick up. So we need to spread that back out. So Matt can just take that, and right now, it's coordination of, okay, you hit this street, you hit this street, and it's easy to, to make a mistake and miss an entire street. With this geo-fencing, what we can actually do is we can say, this is driver A's route. We're going to take all this area and we're going to assign it to driver B, and he can literally drag and drop, and now it becomes part of driver B's route. And then they know their percent went from, I was half done, and now I'm only thirty percent done, so now I know I got more to do. But then he can manage that, um, so we're utilizing that technology. So we tried some with the data that we have with our GIS system, but our system can only do so much. So we finally got to the point where we need to have an out-of-the-box solution so that we can do a better job.
Are you, is this time to ask questions or comments? Yes, okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Great. I do. Well, first off, um, it seems like, uh, putting this in place, uh, the total system as you're proposing, that's going to give us the real data that then becomes the input to all of our cost decisions uh, for the, for the service. Um, and so, uh, you know, just on that basis, um, that gives us a la- a, a, a level of granularity and detail that we've just um, that gives us a la- a a level of granularity and detail that we've just never had before. Um, I guess the other question I have, um, and the foregoing was code for, I I like this. I, what's the, is this five G communications? What I just generally, how how does this, how does this get data back? And is it real time um communications back to the central hub?
It's not five G at this time, it's four G, but that it doesn't use a lot of data, so it doesn't really need five G at this time, so. It's very lean.
Okay. And four G is more universally available than five G. Okay, all right.
Sorry, Steve.
Is this cloud based?
Yes.
All right. I don't know.
This sounds good.
I, I, one more post. No, no, I, and and I, I was already working on about forty other questions, but concerning the information security on this, but uh, Terrell ruined that because he answered it all upfront, so.
Great job, Terrell.
Good job.
But I'm, the only thing I would add is that I'm just, yeah, I'm surprised that trucks today, new trucks today, don't already come with this type of technology. And I think everything we've done in updating to automated collection was about efficiency and cost savings in the long term for the equipment when we're talking about reconfiguring routes. And I think this follows exactly what we were set out to accomplish in switching to automated garbage in the first place. So uh, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I think it's needed um to continue to save on maintenance, to save on fuel usage. So, yeah, I appreciate you guys doing the work to research what product's the best and bringing it here, so. Anything else from you guys? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? We have nothing else highlighted on the agendas or anything else that folks wanted to ask about or discuss? One once, one twice. And with that, that brings us to the end of this work session and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Here's the real question.